Driver situation, I think, handled too. So, yeah, we're pretty much tapped.
Yeah.
And there's no, the air areas are doing open vacations. There's no one up there.
No.
Make motion open this side of agenda.
All right, we have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Four point O, public comment.
Oh, I didn't hear this. Oh, Crystal said it. Oh, okay.
It's really soft. It's really, really soft. Seeing in the public comments, so we will move on. So our next item on the agenda with things under is seven point O reports. So we will start with our elementary principal report.
A short report. Enrollment to see our numbers about as of August thirteenth. For K three six, we're at two ninety-seven. So that's basically down one of the students from last week. But there's still time before the school year starts. Just in the last week, like I've said, other years at this August meeting, it's bad on course, it seems like. But I, that's where we're at as of August thirteenth. That's where we're at as of today too. So we'll keep you updated on enrollment. Any questions on that?
Since the end of last school year, our fourth grade has gone up eight students. Is that how I'm reading that right?
No.
Oh, that's the year next. They move it over, so they're down.
We were up actually two students.
Up, two students.
Yeah.
Okay. I was reading that wrong. We move everybody up a year. Gotcha.
And then that's another thing. Item number two, and that'll, that's part of the agenda. Eight point one, I think, is in-service schedule. So you get an opportunity to see that. Item number three, meetings and trainings. This has been blocked. I've probably missing some, but this kind of heads up what we've had. August thirteenth, we attended, had been attended a basic meeting in Hurstian. August fifteenth, we have a truce meeting with Hope County. August nineteenth, now that has been changed, the date now that we're looking at is August twenty-sixth for a ministerial meeting. August twentieth, we started a red act training, and that is set, that will begin at eight o'clock on August twentieth at the elementary. And then August twenty-first, our sixth grade, we're implementing big ideas. Math and you in sixth grade, we're doing pilot. So this year in the sixth grade, we will not have CPM math. So we have an initial implementation training on Thursday. And then off of that, we have a new support staff orientation. So we'll be calling in our non-early support staff that are new hires and for orientation that afternoon, twelve thirty to thirty-three. Forgot four, not five. Villain grounds, again, just a thank you to our custodial staff, the grounds, and within side of the building too. So the villains come together, everything looks great, floors are being waxed. And it's a little more, you look at the stairs, there's been moving with classrooms and teachers moving and programs coming to the elementary. So that's added a little bit more work, obviously, and it's taking a little bit more time. But we'll be up and ready to go for August twenty-seventh, which is our open house. Any questions?
Thank you. Seven point two, high school principal report. Mr. Gunderski.
Yep, starting off with attendance, see if you finished off the month we made it two forty-nine. And when I created my report, we were at two fifty-nine, so we were at plus ten. High school, as of late, there's been a request for records for two from the high school, so we're at like plus eight. Some of these students are returning students that have either tried going online, went to Fisher, things like that. We do have a couple that are brand new to the district as well, so. But yeah, as of today, I would say we're plus eight at high school. My report's very similar to Dan's. Again, want to thank James and his staff for getting our building ready. When you walk in here, during this time of the day, his staff is working very hard, very diligent what they do, so. Kind of the same thing. I've been meeting with various stakeholders throughout the last couple of weeks regarding individual. Hope County, as Dan mentioned, we met last week with with regards to truancy, and then also ASEC. We had our administrators meeting last, last week on the thirteenth, just to kind of give us a little bit of an update on some of the assignment changes that are happening throughout the INSEC district. And again, new staff orientation, have that on the twentieth of this week, twelve thirty to three. So we'll have, of course, two people there from the high school, as far as our new staff are concerned. And then some of the building safety update, we are meeting tomorrow is our district crisis team. So that means we're bringing in our representatives from law enforcement, birthday fathers, go on. Just got to bring them up to date on the E three notification system and the, again, just kind of refresh around the love you guys terminology. And then lastly, we have our concept for audio seventy-seven.
The other questions?
All right, thank you. Seven point three, superintendent's report.
Little bit redundant with the, with the two principals as well, but I always like to put in little slang words, you know, have you noticed that in my reports? It's go time around here, no question about it, and there's just a lot happening. We're seeing staff coming around. As you know, that staff are required between August first and August twenty-fifth to put in a floating in-service day. And so many of those have done that or are doing that this last week and this week. Tom Wesley was actually one of the gentle, or was the gentleman sitting over here in the corner, the architect that ICS has engaged with. And he was part of the group that, from ICS that walked the building last week. I actually caught him at Hugo's grocery store that evening as he was leaving town, and, and he just said, you know, there was, there's some concerns, of course, he has with thirty-three, thirty-three or thirty-seven. I didn't, I know it. I don't know why I said that. But he's also encouraged by some of the other things that he saw too, so. I think this process that we engage with tonight will start to bring some of that forward. We opened up bids on Tuesday, and we had a number of bids quite different from the past. There's some competition out there right now, and you'll get chances, or they're in your package as well, so we'll get a chance to move through those. But really interesting to see the multiple bids that we got for some of the different projects that we have going on. Had admin meeting last week. And what that group is, is Dan and Don, our two principals, of course, Ryan, our activities director, Steve, our tech director, April, our business manager, and Matty, our HR director. That is going to be the core group of administrators when we have administrative meetings. Those are the people that I go to for answers, for support, for, for ideas, for everything. So this group will be a little bit, it'll be a little bit more predictable and, and a little bit more often that we'll, this group will be meeting. And we covered a myriad of, of items at the meeting, and we'll continue to do that throughout the year. Ball sports started a week ago today. Right now, we're undefeated in the whole season, so it's been a good start so far. Echoing what Dan and Don said about our custodial staff, James and his crew, our buildings look very good, lots of shiny floors. And we had negotiations last Thursday with the teacher group, our first meeting. Didn't talk any numbers per se, but did some, had some language items that, that the teacher group brought forward. I don't know if our negotiations committee will report on that later. That's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Silk? All right, thank you.
Yep.
Moving into eight point O personnel, eight point one, the twenty twenty-five fall in-service schedule.
It is in front of you. I'm going to ask Dan just to maybe highlight some of the pieces there. Dan is the kind of the keeper of this document, so let him take the floor.
Yeah, and some of these dates will be repetitive. If you look from top to bottom, Mr. Silk had mentioned August first through the twenty-fourth is a flex floating day, seven hours of the individual work time for the teachers. So they report to the building principals when they complete that time. August twentieth is new teacher orientation. August twenty-first, support staff orientation. And then Monday, August twenty-fifth, and this is for all district staff, there'll be an all district breakfast in the high school cafeteria. Again, that'll be at eight o'clock, and you can see from the agenda what will take place during that time. Starting at nine o'clock, there'll be an introduction of new staff, presentation from Justin Marcus on behalf of the FEF, Fosun Education Foundation. Mr. Silk will address the school district. The rest of the afternoon is set up, we have elementary and high school staff meetings that will need, we're going to change that because we have another meeting. That will have to take place of that, so Don and I will work on rescheduling the staff meetings. And then in the afternoon, prepare the rooms, work the new rooms. Tuesday is staff development day, that's where we have the ICS listening sessions. And also Don organized Emmy Mowry to present, present to our pair of professionals, starting at the thirty to ten forty-five. She has a couple of sessions before lunch. And then in the afternoon, kind of the lesson vaults, things that staff need to complete before we start schooling session. Some of the seats are listed there. And then Wednesday is basically prep for open house, so. A lot of time for our teachers to, a lot of things that need to be done. Not only physically, but electronically too, so.
And just so you know, you're invited to any and all of it. Certainly, you're invited on Monday morning for breakfast. Would love to have you. And I'm sure you'll be sitting on the edge of your seat for the, my presentation that
Actually block off the whole day.
Have you? Yeah, yeah. Well, we put it up against lunch so that I can go as long as I need to. Yeah, no, but just know that you're certainly invited to any and all, all of the in-service.
Any questions or comments? On the fall schedule, or all in-service schedule?
Where is the?
All right, eight point two, approve not approve the MOU for out-of-field placements. We have
Multiple copies. Yeah. Yep. Little communication stamp pool, so.
You want to come back?
We could do that if you're fine with that. Yep, we'd come back to it.
We're gonna
Well, we're gonna get copies, yeah.
We'll
It tweaked a little bit, Dean, from what you had anyway. Yep.
We press pause on that one, move on, and we'll come back as soon as we have copies to look at for them. Table it and then take it off the table.
I think we just come back to it. Don't need to be that long. We can go to nine point one.
All right, nine point one, approve not approve request to attend the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana on October twenty-eighth through November first.
Don, any comment about that?
There's one that's on, yeah, I guess.
We've been doing it now for three years, for sure, four, four, yeah. So we just look for approval. Because they, they, they go out of state, we have board approval, yep.
Worth of a year notice if they go out of country?
I don't know. I don't know that.
I was just thinking as far as like this Spanish, Spanish trips, something like that, it's usually a year. So I'm just wondering if it's I think it's funds, fundraising. She does it that way, so you can, the payment plan was just paid over
Twelve months versus Yep.
I think it was the same thing for that. Oh, well, my D C trip was the same because of the fundraising for the multiple months of payment plan. I'm not sure. There is a written
There is a written one.
As far as number of months of head of schedule.
We have a call specifically called that out, and then you just specifically, I know it specifically calls for board approval.
Right, yeah. Yep.
I don't think it sets, clarifies a time for the fire to
No, no. The fundraising or the, the, the host, the trip organizer drives that desire to have it early, more so than the school district. Yep. I think we should finish nine point one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, could be looking for a motion for approval for the FFA convention. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Just, Don is there? Oh, go ahead.
Just for information, I know they had reached out to the alumni for just financial support down and stuff, so the alumni just waiting to hear back numbers, and she doesn't have those yet.
Is there a school district or like ratio of chaperones to students that we kind of have set for that?
Ten to one, ten to one fifteen, ballpark, yeah, depending on activity and dangerous student.
I've heard multiple reports years now that how big this convention is and
Yeah, thousands of kids.
Thousands and thousands of kids.
Yeah.
I think they work in conjunction with another, at least one other district too, as far as sharing the bus.
Yeah. There may be three.
And they do have a chaperone.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we will jump back up to eight point two. So the approved not approved the MOU for out-of-field placement. There's documents in front of you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So we've talked about this a couple of times in work session in a personnel committee meeting, we've talked about this, and now we're bringing it before the board for formal approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Fosun Education Association and Fosun Public Schools for one of the Fosun Education Association's member, particularly Jonathan Holger. As you recall, we have made, when we did some realignment of the staffing at the elementary level, it prompted us to reassign Mr. Holger to teach mathematics at the high school level. Seventh, eighth, and ninth grade is what his assignment will be. He is certified as a K eight math teacher, so in order to teach grade nine math, he needs an out-of-field placement. We believe the Education Association and the Personnel Committee and myself as, as district superintendent that this is a different kind of out-of-field placement versus someone that would apply from the start for a position that they're not certified for. Mr. Holger has been, he's a tenured teacher in our system, hired to teach sixth grade when he was hired. Now we're asking him for the, to the benefit of the district to step outside of his certification and help us by teaching math. We believe that that deserves a stipend, and the agreed-upon stipend between the Education Association and the Personnel Committee was equal to one twelfth, no, twelve percent of VA Step One of our, of our master agreement, master teacher contract. That, of course, will change annually, and with that, then that calculation will change as well. That calculation is the same as a teacher overload for any of our staff that teach an extra class period per day. So with that, the memorandum of understanding is before you, this was crafted by our legal team. And we just asked them to make a few tweaks at the end, but basically it says therefore mutually agreed upon and understood that during this school year only, this is a one year, and it's specific to this individual, shall be provided additional stipend in the amount of five thousand six hundred and four dollars paid out over twenty-four pay periods as he would be paid out his regular and customary pay. Parties agreeing, this arrangement is, excuse me, the parties agree this arrangement is specific to the unique circumstances surrounding the needs of the district, and I think that's important. It's the need of the district that is driving this. MOU is non-binding, non-precedent setting for future teaching assignments. And that, that this sunsets after year. There is some discussion about whether or not this would get negotiated into the master agreement. That has not been decided yet. That will be part of the negotiations process or not. And should we need, should it not make it there, and we would need to use it again in the future, we wouldn't have another memorandum of understanding. That's a lot of rambling. Makes sense to everyone, or any questions for me on that? If not, we'd be looking, administrative recommendation would be approved as MOU.
Make a look into the number of these understand of standing.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Excuse me, thank you.
Moving down to ten point, oh, operational, ten point one, approve not approve milk, bread, fuel, snow removal bids for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So breaking that down even further, ten point one point one, milk bid, looks like Prairie Farms.
So in front of you, you have a summary sheet of the bids as well as the individual bids themselves. And as Chair Vassler just stated, we only have one bid for milk, and that is from Prairie Farms. But we would be seeking, I don't know how you want to do it, Chair, if you want to get all into one motion, or do you want individual motion for each one?
I feel like the first three could probably, we could probably call four and one, but
Okay.
The fourth one has options.
Yeah, true.
So we should probably deal with that one. So take a minute to look through, I guess, but the ten point one point one, milk, we have a Prairie Farms bid. Ten point one point two, we have our bread bid from Panigold, and ten point one point three is our fuel from Lapeer Oil.
Can I speak to the other, let's see, for the bread bid, we have just Panigold, did they have another name besides Panigold? Is that their only name? That's their only name. Last year, we had a couple bids for them. Our, we had a couple breads, but this year we only had the one. You can see, we put this out, they filled it all in for the different types of bread products that we would be purchasing on behalf of our food service program.
Can I ask, I don't remember, did you compare these numbers to last year? Pretty much the same?
I did not. I guess, given it was the only
It was the only bid.
Only bid, yeah, I didn't, I guess, I did not compare it to last year, so I don't know that. We bid similarly, you know, these different products, but, but how they compared to a year ago, I guess I don't know. That's a fair question, though. We can find that information and provide that as well.
For the fuel bid, there was
No, and I have a call into Can we talk about that? Is that okay? Yep. So we, we believe we would get a bid from Horton's, and we did not, which was surprising. I did talk to one of the Horton, gentleman with the last name Horton, some mid-July, and explained to him that we would be going out for bid shortly, this is prior to our July board meeting. Then at the July board meeting, when you authorize calling for bids, we actually sent to the Walker office a request for bid with all the paperwork, correct? Yep. And Tuesday came and went, and we didn't get a bid. Yep.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, because he, when, when I talked to him, he was, he seemed aware of it, because he said he'd had a conversation with the peers about that their station might be more desirable because there's more space, and, and I anticipated that we would get a bid, but we did not. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And the Lapeer bid is very similar to what we've done in the past.
Lapeer bid, I remember from last year.
Yeah, yeah. I guess the only option would be is if we did not accept the fuel bid and, and rebid it, that's an option. If we wanted to do that.
I looked at the bids for Panigold, if you want that.
Yeah. Where are we at?
Ten, eight, and cents.
Up?
Up, except for the twenty-four count, similar by sixty.
Things that you're sure of more than that.
Good thing we're not buying eggs while they're down.
Maybe we should do approve ten, that one, that one, the bulk bid for Prairie Farms. We should take one by one.
No, we
We can lump one, two, and three together, since they're individual bids. You want to do them individual, Scott wants to do them individual. He wants to, wants to make this meeting go a little longer. Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second for approvals for the milk bid. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Temple one point two, bread. All right. Now we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Ten point point three, fuel. Lapeer Oil.
You said that was recently in the last year?
Yeah, it's just, we don't pay tax.
Like, yeah, just a tax.
It's the way it's been for
We have a motion and a second for the fuel bid. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Ten point point four, snow removal. We have two bids from Hayes Enterprises as well as Lenas Sand and Gravel, and I believe that is laid out side by side on and it's, and it's individual things in here as well, but I like the line to line, you can just compare.
Quick question on the, on that part, maybe Dean has the information. Didn't it used to be like a bid for the season, like a dollar a month for the season years ago? That's all good, that's great.
If you recall, would it already be three years ago when we had just tremendous snow? I mean, our bill was high, and now we'd followed that with two years of pretty minimal, and, you know, we budgeted. We didn't budget for the high end, but we also didn't budget on the low end either when we had a lean year. So the budget, the last two years, we've actually saved some money from the budget. But the one year, we were over budget, but that's what it was, you know, yep.
Both of these bids are comparable as far as what they're guaranteeing time-wise, removing snow piles. That was in the bid that you sent out.
Do you know what type of equipment is for dairy? What's that?
No.
It could be a situation where you could rent for me, if it gets into, like, people doing renting, I don't know. Yeah, we also have another equipment.
You know, the, the expectation, right, I mean. Right, right.
The timeframe is that for.
Yep. I guess that's how I would respond to that and, and. Time will tell, I guess. And if the performance isn't happening, I would believe that we have the right to. To change our decision.
Based on that, Lenas has been working for as long as.
There's been snow.
There's been snow. We've never had.
I don't know that we, I mean, I didn't.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same signs. Alright, ten point two, approve, not approve, bids for sale of buses. We'll take these one at a time. There's different numbers. Ten point two point one, bus eight fourteen, we have a bid from both Luckins or Patty Joe. So I believe the bus, or the bid from Luckins, how would be eight hundred dollars? And the bid from independent party would be nine hundred and eleven dollars and one cent. For bus eight fourteen.
Make a motion to approve that, three eleven dollars and one cent.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, and then. The way that I read it is the bus B fourteen, the bid from Luckins is again eight hundred. And the bid from Patty Joe Carols is five hundred and ten dollars and one cent.
Bid for eight hundred dollars?
Alright, motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Does anybody remember what we sold that thing?
Four hundred.
Yeah.
I think it was, wasn't it? Six hundred and thirteen or six hundred and sixty six, there was like some. Not a lot. So I think it was six hundred and sixty six sixteen, I don't know.
I think it's a little bit more, these, yeah. So.
I think it's just like. Alright. Ten point three, approve, not approve bids for demolition of Methodist Church and Parsonage. Alright, so that, there's also, there's individual bids in the packet and that is also laid out on our beautiful spreadsheet here.
Thanks to Ms. Woods for that.
Yeah. Fan.
So you can see we have a variety of, of bids. Five, I believe.
Yeah.
Four or five. We put it out for demolition of the church and parsonage and for fill, backfill. To provide a buildable lot when completed. If there's. Excuse me, I'll back that up. The contractor and the historical society will work to salvage the stained glass windows. That will not be part of any exchange of funds with, with the school district. So once this is awarded, that it becomes the responsibility of the. Of the historical society to work with the contractor to get those windows out if they so choose. And the. They've indicated that they would do that, they will need to meet the timeframe that we establish. For demolition with the contractor, but, but they all have that opportunity. And there will be no charge by the district for those.
I believe our only. Piece of this in agreement with the church would be that cornerstone.
Cornerstone, excuse me, and, and we need to get the bell down. But the cornerstone too is our responsibility, correct? Yep, and we'll work with the contractor on that, yep.
So to the best of our knowledge, these five bids are all.
Yep, same project, yep, alright, yep. Fair enough.
We're not getting infinitely more on some and less on others.
Nope.
We hope there's any debate or.
It's all been done. We, we did that all last year. Yep, so it's all, it's good to go. Yep. We paid a little bit for that, but we had an analysis done and then he did. I don't remember exactly what the report is, but we got a clearance by a. Legitimate. I don't know what he would be to give us the go ahead. That it's. Yep, yep, yep. And just so you know, we have taken a few items out of there from the construction trades class. Took some big wooden doors out of those and then they were used for some projects. But if you recall, the church really removed virtually everything from there. So it's, it's ready to be demolished, short of working with the historical society to save windows.
Make a motion to approve things enterprise for demolition. Church and first.
Did you hear that one, Scott? I think it was the second from across the room.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, yep.
You're good, you're good.
Yep.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
No. The only time we would, we would not approve the other ones is if we rejected all bids. Yep.
By approving one, we therefore.
Yep.
Do not approve the other four.
Correct. Good call. I'll wait for after the call for the question.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
A decision that this board will need to make though is the timeframe to do that work. I don't know if we want to work through that now or decide in September.
Would that need official board action to have a? I want. If it needs to be an action.
Probably not, that'll be.
We'd have to do it next month.
That'll be me, okay. Scott and Dean are saying administrative.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'll work with it, well. Right, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Now we get into our gymnastics, we're gonna tackle ten point six before ten point four. Or rename it ten point three point nine. So that would be approve, not approve, bus garage parking lot bids.
Can I add some insight to this? So what happened was. We did this study, or Widsith did the, the study two years ago now. And in this study. Or in their recommendation, they put together a plan. The plan called for substructure removal of fill, backfilling, putting in drainage. And the end product being. Blacktop on top of the final product. If you recall, and I don't expect you necessarily to do that. We talked at this level and at with Widsith as well. And, and I said, can we not do the blacktop? And just classify it? And then drive on it for a year, make sure it settles right, and then come back and blacktop. Yeah, in fact, that would be recommended. So that's what we bid a year ago. That's how we bid it without the blacktop. And we ended up not rejecting all those bids and not doing the project, if you recall. So that forces issue to rebid it. In, in getting the specs out. And I will take responsibility, I did not instruct the contractors to not bid the blacktop. So some of the bids we have have the blacktop included, some do not. That makes sense?
That would be why there's such variance.
Correct. So Hagan has the low bid. And Mark last year, he and I visited about this, and so he bid it the same way this year as he did last year. The other contractors simply got the specs. Looked at it, which called for blacktop as the top layer and bid it accordingly. So that was a mistake on my part in communicating that or having how I asked the bids to be written. And so in order to get a fair, rather than just going back to the contractors and say. Take off your blacktop, then, yeah, I think we, just, my recommendation would be reject all bids and then rebid it. Short turnaround, it's gonna be pretty simple for them, they've done their hard work already.
To bid it up to blacktop.
Yep. Unless we want to bid the blacktop, again. I think it's a cost issue as well as, I think there's, there's good recommendation that. That we don't do that the first year and drive on it and pack it down, etc.
Totally agree with my.
Yep, okay, okay.
I have a hard time believing we just cannot dig all the frost oils and fill them. That was, that was safe, I mean, that's a problem, isn't it, right?
Yep.
It's, I wonder if we can pursue that, that option.
Before we rebid it again.
Part of the problem is based on what's that study, there was material in there that's probably not. Rent material for that.
Right.
Type of.
When they did their.
It's probably just anything for falling on the back of the donkey. Oh, I'm just guessing. There's only a couple areas around our, our doors and.
The main, the furthest. What I call the main garage where the office is and stuff, that's the worst spot right there. That's where the, it almost becomes almost impossible to get into that, though this year was way better than other years, right?
See it as a driving spot to go back there.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, tell me what, you know, we could run both of them.
Well, if, if you're gonna go pull back out and clarify the bid. Or. Throw on that option, say, could you bid for? Reformations, the plans may have, they're good with that bid, don't clarify.
We would just, we just have to rewrite that, but I don't know if that's a. I don't know if we can write a, a bid sheet. That makes sure everybody's doing the same project. Yeah.
I think that whole area is. I'm trying to think, there's something materially. Had to put forth, it wasn't done right. And I don't know what the city, when they redid the, just by the walk in the curb. Or was that city, if they dug up or managed that stuff, I think they did.
Sure.
Well, first of all, we need to reject.
So we would be looking to approve or approve a bid or reject bids. As the first part of this.
Yep. An administrative recommendation would be to reject all bids.
Send it back out.
In some way, shape or form, yep.
I'd be wanting to do that, definitely, definitely.
Well, I think we.
I think, I think that's what I would look for, reject all.
Since the bids are open, I think we were. If we're, if we're, since they're not comparable. I think we reject these ones and then at some level send bids back out, whether it be with the current plan or with another plan.
Right.
I mean, motion to reject bids as received and open.
I think so, I'd leave it at one, two different motions.
So, yeah, we have ten point four as the.
Yep.
So we have a motion. To reject bids. We have a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
We will communicate that, well, based on what, what decision is made with ten point four.
Yeah.
We will communicate something tomorrow to the bidders.
Okay.
Yep.
So then ten point four is approved, not approved authorization to rebid the bus garage parking lot, so that would be where we would wanna decide. What it is we're asking for bids on.
From a, from a budget standpoint, we have not budgeted for this project. Just so you know that, okay? In the preliminary budget, certainly an adjusted budget would, if it's approved, it will be included, it'll be included. But the preliminary budget does not have any set aside money for us.
Hey, we just sold two buses.
That's right, flush with cash. Yeah, but we're paying extra for bread, so. That money's coming less than.
What else? That's it?
Say we're paying less than fuel.
Yeah.
Call it a wash.
And again, if we rebid it, that does not obligate us to do the project.
Right.
You know? So I guess my recommendation would be that we would rebid it. And then it will make a decision accordingly when we, after we receive those bids.
You'll reject each of them?
Yep. Yep, what's, what's occurred, yep.
I think as quick and easy as it is for to rebid, I mean, if it was a whole bunch of group, having to rebid it for not sure we have the money. It would be good, but if it's just to be allowed.
Seems simple to me, I don't, that's not my industry, so I don't know for sure, but it does seem simple enough to.
I would think they would be, when they built it for themselves, there's a line I have to.
Yeah.
For each of those.
Yep.
Reissue bids.
And just for, for the record, without blacktop.
Without blacktop.
Is that what it's called, blacktop?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
We have a motion.
Also have the.
And a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ten point five, certification for public budget hearing on December fifteenth, twenty twenty five at five forty P M.
That is basically what we call our truth and taxation. As you recall, we've done that always before the December board meeting, we've used, sometimes we did, I think the first year I was here, we did it an hour before. And we sat for fifty minutes, and I think last year we did it at five thirty. And we sat for twenty minutes. And at April's suggestion, she wants a five forty scheduled start time.
And to recruit a friend to come. And to, everyone has to bring a friend. Okay. You guys schedule that by? If you have a hockey game.
Is it a motion?
It is a motion, yes, motion and second needed.
Make the motion to see what other bus hearing. Make the motion to open up the public bus hearing, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five four P M.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports.
Uh, just quick reminder, as mentioned, uh, we held our first negotiations meeting last Thursday. Uh, we were brought a few ass by the teachers group, um, no numbers were discussed, just a few language pieces for the start. Um, we also went over those seven people together. Our next meeting is next Monday.
Right. All right. And just one other piece of that, Allison, um, we did, our April did meet with um, member of their negotiating team too. I don't know what we would call that. Make sure the numbers are apples and apples, so that happened. Yep, yep, so that has happened, and so we'll be ready for Monday.
Any other reports? Or additional comments? Thirteen point oh, next scheduled meeting, September fifteenth, at six P M, right here.
Uh, anything?
All right.
Trying to keep me past seven, that's what you're doing.
Uh, policy, maybe should hope should be.
Okay, I'll get a schedule.
I do agree.
I will not be here September fifteenth.
For when?
September fifteenth. I will not be here.
Oh, okay.
Looking for a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned at six fifty-nine.
I lost a buck.
You go.